I'll ask the business manager to note the role. I'd like everyone to rise and hand the snow, please, and the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item is adoption of the agenda. The most recent update is on the table in front of you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Remove adoption.
Second, a motion, a second to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. Motion carries. Four dates to remember. March 27th is the next regular board of education meeting at 5:30 PM here in the instructional planning center in the arena. March 28th is the fourth and fifth grade parent teacher conferences from 3:30 to 6:45. March 28th is also here in high school parent teacher conferences from 5:30 to 8:45. March 30th and April 3rd are middle school parent teacher conferences from 4:00, 7:15 PM. April 4th is fourth and fifth grade parent teacher conferences from 3:30 to 6:45. April 5th is early release. April 5th is also kindergarten roundup from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. And April 6th and 10th are kindergarten and first grade parent teacher conferences from 3:30 to 6:45. The remaining days to remember are on the agenda. Next item is community input for items not on the agenda. Is anybody present for our community, for input for items not on the agenda? I don't see anybody approaching, so we'll move on to number seven, conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers. We have one tonight. This is from Sherri Nelson, the director of curriculum and instruction. It's number WR 2017-49. We are to review this disclosure and determine if the transaction or the terms of the contract are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest. This is just a disclosure that she is speaking at a conference.
Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have read through it, and I find that the transaction terms of contract are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest, such that a waiver should be granted, and I would put that in a form of motion.
So, it's a motion by Mr. Hader to so find that. Second, any further discussion on that motion to approve? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Try that one more time, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. The next item is an executive session under SDCL 1-25-2 for the purpose of preparing for contract negotiations or negotiating with employees or employee representatives. This will be a hopefully a brief executive session, so they entertain a motion to go into executive session for that purpose. So, motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries. We will take a brief recess.
We now turn it over to the superintendent to celebrate successes in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I always worry that we're missing something, so I encourage people to make sure they let Dolly know. The administrators do a great job of letting Dolly know different things that are going on, so they can be included in here. If we miss something, just let my office know. It's a busy time of year. Congratulations to the 2017 All ESD wrestling team members, Chipper Schillingstad, Trent Frankham, and Marshall Simons. Congratulations to Megan and Marcus Smith, Megan's first grade teacher at Buchanan on the birth of their son Tucker, born February 23rd. Congratulations to Tushi, Heisei, Shirley Pa, Kathy Ayala, Raquel Sanchez, Maria Sanchez, Gabby Escobar Salonic, Ryan Kruger, and Acebia Smith, Aiwei, Apo, and Sheech Sanal, who were participants on the Destination Imagination teams that competed at regionals. The teams captured a first and second place. Not sure which of these is getting us.
That was my, I think there's a loose connection somewhere here.
Okay.
I'll just stop touching tape.
No, it's not mine. Okay. And continuing, congratulations to Hayden Kane, sixth grader, for first place in the state, the 11 and 12-year-old boys at the South Dakota Short Course Swim Meet in Aberdeen. Congratulations to Peyton Williams Morrison, an eighth grader, for qualifying for the state geography bee to be held at Northern State University in Aberdeen. Congratulations to Malachi Mann, an eighth grader, Harold Rosales, an eighth grader, Will Smith, an eighth grader, and Maggie Knipling, seventh grader, for their performance in the middle school all-state band, which was held in here on March 3 and 4. Congratulations to our own school board member, Jasmine Snow, sophomore, down at the end of the table here, for being chosen first-place winner for the Jerome Norgren Poetry Contest High School Division. Jasmine submitted a creative writing piece entitled "Everything Must Go." Over 1,200 poetry and pro entries from across the state were received. Jasmine had been invited to read her writing at the Norgren and Wetherington Celebration reading to be held on April 9th at South Dakota State University. Congratulations, Jasmine. That's why when you speak, we all listen, because you're such a good orator. Okay? Congratulations to the boys' basketball team on winning the regional qualifying game and advancing to the state, which is this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in Rapid City. Good luck. For those who haven't heard the schedule, I believe we open 7:00 PM on Thursday evening against Sioux Falls Lincoln. Congratulations to Mackenzie and Jason Gill, who were married on February 17th. Mackenzie is a Huron Middle School graduation coach, which I believe if you referenced earlier in the agenda, you just approved to become a fourth-grade teacher, same Mackenzie. Okay? Thank you to local dentists, Dr. Farmer, Dr. Gibson, Dr. Cahill, Dr. Fall, Dr. Mann, Dr. Wintle, and Dr. Fast for participating in the fourth-grade oral health screening at Washington on February 23rd. Thanks also to Rita Basler, our nurse, for setting everything up for the screening. And thank you to the Huron Clinic for sponsoring a $300 tour fee for the anatomy and physiology classes and the biomed classes at the high school to attend a tour of South Dakota State University and their cadaver lab and nursing sims lab. Jennifer Fuchs and Shar Sarda took a total of 52 students for the day to these two labs, who were all students and were able to work hands-on in both labs. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. We now move on to reports to the board. Our first is the classified employee of the month, presented by Carol Tompkins from Food Service.
The button's out yet, Carol. I didn't check the podium. Is the button on the?
Yes. Okay. Nicole, everybody, I want to introduce Nicole Gerber. She's our Madison 2-3 Center satellite. Please help me honor Nicole Gerber as our classified employee of the month for Food Service. Nicole is our 2-3 Center satellite. She's worked for school nutrition now for one year. She's proven to be an extraordinarily hard-working, and conscientious, and very smiley person. Nicole comes in smiling in the morning. She smiles while preparing the food. She smiles while serving lunch. She smiles while cleaning up at the end of the day, and although very tired, she still leaves work smiling. Imagine getting to come to work every day with her. Her attitude is always a can-do attitude, a may I help you with something attitude, a no problem, I can take care of that for you attitude, a you can count on me, I'll just make sure it gets done right attitude. So, in not-so-shortish sentence, Nicole gives us 110% all the time in a most pleasing, friendly, and happy, and genuine manner. We're delighted to have Nicole on our staff and as our classified Food Service employee of the month. Congratulations, Nicole.
Thank you. The next item is the land report, but Mr. Van Berkom cannot be present tonight, so we will hold that up.
He'll have a full report next time he's followed all your.
Yes. Report next meeting. Item C is the business manager's report.
Okay. All I have to report on tonight is the general fund status. So, this, so far this fiscal year, we're 67% of the way through our 2016-2017 fiscal year. We've collected $10,441,000, or 58% of the budget of revenue in the general fund. Last year at this time, we'd collected $9,176,000, or 58% of that budget. So far this year, we've expanded $10,325,000, or 56% of the budget expenditures. Last year at this time, we'd spent $10,967,000, or 65% for the same period. And a little quick explanation on that is it's the way the teachers' contracts are being expensed out in the accounting system this year. The percentages aren't quite matching up this year, but they will start matching up again for comparative purposes next year. And, but however, we do monitor the expenses from month to month. This month, the expenses are 8.51% higher than last month, and as each month ticks by, we should be at 8.33%, so we're almost right on track with what we should be spending.
Thank you. Any questions for our business manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
My main report tonight is that we're into the hiring season and pretty encouraged by what we've seen in the last week. We have some certifications that we've received applications for. We'll have some contracts for you to approve in two weeks that have to do with someone who is coming to take the high school behavioral, where we had been recruiting that for the last couple of years, and we'll have a contract for your approval in a couple of weeks. We're interviewing right now for elementary positions, and we are optimistic with the applicants that we have right now for the library position, which is, which has seen some activity this last week, including a couple that have come specifically with library certification. So, we're pretty excited about the fact that, that the recruitment mechanisms that we have in place appear to be working, and I'm pretty confident that we're going to be able to hire quality employees. As you saw with the resignation this time around, that young people's lives change and where they're going and those types of things, that's a natural part of what happens, and so we'll be looking for a couple more teachers. But the main activity right now is library, special education, and elementary positions. Okay? Other than that, I'll yield until Tim gets here on, on the other report on the legislature, then I'm very, very grateful for the working relationship we have with our three legislators who communicated as often as, as practical during the session on issues that affected education. Very grateful.
Any questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, we'll move on. There's no old business on the agenda. We have a few items of new business. The first is introduction of the Huron Public School District Wellness Policy.
It's in there for you to look at and start reviewing.
Is this, is this a new policy?
Is this a new policy or is this a revision of an old policy?
This is an update. Carol Tompkins is the person who carries the water on developing this. She's brought the policy for review to three or four administrative meetings and reviewed it with them, and now it is ready for you to start looking at. Carol, I don't know if you had anything on the introduction night to visit with them about? I didn't think so. Okay? But as you look it over, if you have questions and could send the questions to me, then we would be prepared at the next meeting to go over any concerns that you'd have as far as, there's several things on there that have to do with compliance and those expectations. Of course, it's connected to food and nutrition, which is one of the reasons that Carol has so generously carried the task of that for several years now, and explains who all works with her, et cetera. But this is our first introduction to you, so that you have it in front of you.
So this is an update?
Update. I'm sorry.
Okay. And so, is there any substantial changes from the old language? I'm just, I'm looking through it and I don't-
While Carol's coming up, what I'd say is, Carol, I may have omitted the fact that the board likes to have the changes highlighted so they know what's different from the previous, and I did not ask for that yet, but-
It's updated in the respect that South Dakota has a model wellness policy. This is their update as of this year. As of 2016, South Dakota updated their policy to this one, which is very much like Alliance for Healthier Generations. So we've gone from our old policy, shall I say, last year, knowing that South Dakota's updated theirs and Alliance for Healthier Generation and USDA is in, you know, conjunction with Alliance for Healthier Generation also. They're all trying to get on the same page, slowly but surely, and so we just felt that since it was time for us to update, we might as well adopt a South Dakota model, which again is very much like USDA's. They're almost word for word.
So-
So this is an update from ours last year at Huron.
Did you, so the current policy we have in effect, did you take that and amend it and change it to equal this, or was it you were replacing the old policy with this new language in total?
It's an update, but there's a lot more to this one. It's a longer policy and only because we're trying to follow the model policy.
Okay.
I don't know if that answered your question, or it just made it worse, but-
What it sounds like is we have the model policy from the state. We're taking that and using that in place of what our old policy was.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could we get a copy of the old policy, just, you know, for reference for the next meeting?
Certainly. I can get that sent to you right off the website. I can pull it and send it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else on that item? We'll take no action today. It'll be on for first reading in two weeks and then on for a second reading and approval after that. Okay. Seeing nothing further, we'll move on to the next item of new business, which is consideration of open enrollment requests. This one does involve an executive session, after which we will come back into session to take action. So I will entertain a motion at this time to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the expulsion, suspension, discipline, assignment of, or the educational program of a student.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. Motion carries. We will again take a brief recess and go into executive session. We're in session here. We are still on item B, now seeking action on the open enrollment requests. Mr. Hader?
I'd make a motion to allow three students from our school district to-
Sure, and I don't think your mic's on. There we go.
Make a motion to allow three students from our school district to return from open enrollment in Iroquois due to special circumstances. Reference number, Iroquois open enrollment numbers 2015-2016-4, 2015-2016-5, and 2016-2017-24.
Second. There's a motion and a second to adopt that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. That motion carries. Our last item of new business is approval of the milk and dairy contract with Dean Foods. Now, ask the business manager to talk us through this one.
Excuse me. The milk and dairy contract, we noticed on the consent agenda, no bids received by deadline. The bid came walking in the door at 10 minutes too late on one of their attempts, and on their second attempt, that they FedExed overnight, walked in about noon. The bid opening was at 9:00 AM. So knowing that all bids are missed, if you read through the laws, then it's up to the business manager to negotiate a contract. The negotiations that took place were, we talked with Dean Foods and we asked them if we could open their bid and if they would honor those prices, and they said they would. So we basically opened the bid late, and we have that bid pricing, which is in the board packet, and we would recommend taking that with the escalator clause, which we have a history of doing for quite a number of years. For some reason, on milk and dairy, they'll offer you a firm bid or an escalator bid. An escalator bid is always, starts out less than the firm bid. A firm bid, they would honor that price all year long. An escalator bid would allow them to adjust their price if suddenly the price of milk went up. Then we would just follow the market up or down, which is what we have a history of doing.
Any questions? Action?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the milk and dairy contract with Dean Foods. Any further discussion on that motion?
Would it be the escalator clause that would be used?
That's what I'd recommend.
Any further discussion, or is that prompt any need to change our motion?
I'll put that in the motion in the minutes. We'll reflect that we accept their escalator clause bid.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. That motion carries. Our last item is one final executive session, after which there will be no further business, no action taken. And so I'll entertain a motion to prepare for contract negotiations or negotiating with employees or employee representatives.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second to go into executive session for that purpose. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. That motion carries. Again, we'll take one last brief recess.